All right, this time I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education to order on August 25th, 2022. This time, if everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commander Daniel Rush and Lieutenant Commander Andy Correa from our NJROTC program. Order. Orders. Detail. Order. Freeze. Arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. About. Face. Order. Arms. What's that? I know. At this time, I'd like to introduce Pastor Glenn Fussell from Harvest Time Church of God to lead us in our invocation.
Tuesday morning about four o'clock, I heard this word in my spirit, and I knew that it was from God. And then just a few moments after I heard that word, then I heard the word "school board," and I thought, okay, well, I was not scheduled at that time to be here tonight. However, about 11:30, I got the call to be here tonight. So anyway, here is the word. The word that I heard very strongly at four o'clock Tuesday morning was insufficient. Insufficient. Something that is insufficient is not enough in amount or degree for a particular purpose. And then in a few more minutes, I heard one of the Lord's names, one of his many names, and in English, his name means the all-sufficient one. The all-sufficient one. In Hebrew, that name is El Shaddai. El Shaddai occurs 48 times in the Hebrew Bible. The Hebrew word "da" means shed forth, pours out, or gives great benefits. This would imply provision, blessing, and sustenance. We see God as being all-sufficient, giving liberally all that is needed, totally in control of all emotions, fears, situations, and results. The word "shadd" or "shaddan" means breast or breast, plural. One who nourishes, supplies, and satisfies. This speaks of his ability to completely nourish, satisfy, and supply his children with their needs, just as a mother with her child. And then the Lord reminded me that when we were pastoring our second church, not too long after we'd started that pastory, one of the elderly gentlemen there shared this evangelist in the days of the multi-board and said that the evangelist had his riding partner with him, and all of a sudden they ran out of gas and they cooled off side the road. So the evangelist noticed that there was water down in the ditch, and he said, "Brother," he said, "do you believe that God turned the water into wine?" He said, "Yes, I do." He said, "Okay, we're fixing to go down in this ditch, and we're going to get this water, and we're going to ask God to turn this water into gas." They did, put it in the tank, they went on down the road. Let's pray. I'm not going to go any further with that. I bet you get the point. Father, your word says in Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verse 5 and Verse 6, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart; lean not to thine own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge you, and you shall direct our paths." Father, there are things before us that maybe we don't know the right answer. There's many possible answers, but Father, you know the one that is the right one for this school board in their many decisions. And Father, I ask you, dear God, to answer them as they lean on you, as they seek you with all their heart, Father, and leadership of this school system for this county, Father. And I ask you, Father, to do it in such a way, Father, that even the heathen would have to acknowledge, "God answered these prayers," so, Father, that you would get all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory in Jesus' holy and mighty name, and amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Got you. I'll be again. Yes, I'll be. Of course. Thank you. If we were in T-County, you'd get T. Coach Booth, I'd like you to come back in, finish that story, give your wife a little longer to get here. Oh, she's here. She's there. Okay, great. Great. You were behind. You were up. You were sitting behind. No, not yet. Okay, all right. So at this time, I'd like adoption of the agenda, and for someone to call Douglas now and tell him I started the meeting out of order. Need a motion? Say it. Mr. Wade, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we'll begin our meeting with our leadership capacity and talking about the vision and mission of the school system. The mission is destination graduation for college career in life, and the vision is to create a stronger community, do an equitable and excellent education for every student. What a great night to have these recognitions when we talk about community. So we'll move on into governance and leadership and special recognitions, and we have first is our Award of Distinction, Ms. Lot.
Thank you, Dr. Lees. Thank you for giving me a moment to brag on our finance department. I want to start by saying that the Coffee County School System was awarded the Award of Distinction for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year 2021 by the Department of Audit. This is the fifth year the school system has received this since 2014, and the award is distinction presented to a school that, first of all, submits quality financial statements and supporting documentation in a timely manner, whose annual financial report is given an unmodified audit opinion, is free of any significant deficiencies or material weakness, and complies with all transparency and government requirements. And the award encourages local boards of education to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles and recognize individual organizations that are successful in achieving this goal. So I would like at this time to ask our Director of Finance, Ms. Tracy Yon, and her team, Jody Chancy, Hope Lot, Jan Stevens, and Christina Saylor, which Christina couldn't be here tonight, to come forward because these ladies are the reason that we achieved this goal for our county. And so I want us to just recognize them for all. This is just a snapshot of the hard work that these ladies put forth in keeping us running and keeping our money good. So thank you, ladies. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, ladies. Great job. Great job. Thank y'all. Great job. I love you. Get a picture.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Congrats, ladies. All right. And our next recognition is the weightlifting team, weightlifting competition. We have Coach Mike Booth here.
They're the better looking. I heard you over there. You grieved with me. I appreciate that. Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come tonight. My name is Mike Booth. It's been probably a couple of years since we were able to come last and kind of report on the successes of our kids here in this county and our program. I'm glad to be back. I just want to quickly introduce my assistants and helping me, my wife. She kind of came on board with me a couple of years ago. She couldn't escape it, so she decided she was going to help out. Katie Lot came on this year and also volunteering. We have Ashley Hewitt all over, certified USA weightlifting and also CrossFit coaches. So it's nice. They have a lot of great background, a lot of wealth and knowledge that they add to our kids. Just want to add a couple of highlights while you're looking at that good group of kids up there. This is our eighth season of having competitive weightlifting here at Coffee County. This year was our largest number of participants in the county. We had 60-plus kids that participated. Thirty-three of them qualified for Nationals. Of those 33, 15 went to Las Vegas with us to compete at the National Championship, which is a tie with the highest number that we've ever taken. We had two kids this year that signed scholarships at the collegiate level for the sport of weightlifting, which was a first here in this county. So we're very proud of their accomplishments. It's been, it was a big year for us. With that, I'd like to go ahead and just start into our kids. I know they can't be here, and like I said, we have 15 kids. Their ages, this one is our youngest one, Scott Smith. He's a 10-year-old. We have kids that were 10 all the way up to 19 graduating out of high school. This was our youngest one. A quick little blur with Scott, there's about six of them that are 13 and unders. That 32 kilo right there, by the way, is his weight class. If you look at him, he's tiny. He'll probably be in that weight class again next year. He's tiny, powerful and tiny. But we started, or my wife started a program called the Little Trojan Lifters Program. It's a program for grades 2 through 5, and they come in and they do a lot of general athletic conditioning, some crossfits, competitions. We introduce the Olympic lifts to them, and that's where we pick up a lot of these kids. And it's just parents that want to get their kids doing something when there's no other sports going on, and we open up our arms as they come on in and work with those kids. And Scott's one of those individuals that started with us as a Little Trojan. Our next one is Reese Robinson. You've probably heard of the Robinsons well. She is the third out of the group of three that were currently, all three of them lifted at Nationals this year. Reese was in the 45-kilo weight class. This was her first year competing at Nationals. Next one was my son Noah. This was his third year competing at Nationals. Real quick, because some of these, because we didn't get to talk to you last year about how things went, Noah, he placed third last year at Nationals in the 11-and-under division. This is his third year competing. We've got Cole McDuffie, also a 13-and-under 55 kilo, and then Tripp Lewis, 13-and-under at 61. And rounding them out is Connor Gurley. He was a 13-and-under 73 kilo. And all those kids are 13 and under, so they're tiny, and next year they'll move up. Some of them will move up to the 14, 15 category. We only had one 14, 15 this year. It was Wyatt Mercer. He was in the 61-kilo class. He is at the high school this year. And then we get into our largest group, is our 16, 17 division. Chloe Merritt, which is Katie's daughter, competed in the 59-kilo weight class. She's competed with us for two years. We had Leighton Parker. This was Leighton's first year. He's also at the high school this year. He's a 10th grader. It's his first year competing. The next gentleman is Mikhail Smith. There's a lot written up here. Last year, Mikhail was a bronze medalist. Well, this year, he won the national championship in his age weight class, in the 67-kilo class. Won the gold in the snatch, the clean and jerk, and the overall. So I'm very proud of Mikhail. It's been about four or five years we've had at least one national champion, and Mikhail kept that streak alive for us. Dane Risch was our next one. Dane is a senior this year. He won overall bronze and won the bronze in the snatch. He's actually right now, he's got a bunch of, he's got some offers in weightlifting, wrestling, and football's looking at him as well. So he's a highly skilled athlete that a lot of people want to have. So Dane has got one more year with us. And then rounding out the 16, 17 is Range Robinson. Past two years, he's actually a three-time national champion. This year, he stepped in, and the gentleman right there in the middle, who doesn't look like he's much, that beat him, is extremely strong. He's a world, he lifts internationally. So Range stepped into a really tough weight class. He won the bronze in the clean and jerk and overall as well this year, but he had a fantastic year. All right, the next group we have, these are our oldest ones. They're all gone now. They were seniors last year. They're in the junior division, which means they're going to be in ages 18 through 20. And the first one we have here is Jasmine Gaskins. Jasmine, we have her signing right there. She signed with Bruton Parker. She is a dual athlete at Bruton Parker. She's doing both soccer and weightlifting competitively there. So she was also the national runner-up in 2020 in weightlifting. Followed up by Rhett Robinson. So there's another Robinson who just went off to the Mercer Marine Academy. Rhett lifted two years for us, and in those two years, he probably had the biggest improvement of everyone. This year, he was a silver medalist in the snatch, bronze in the clean and jerk, and bronze overall. So he finished, he got a great finish before he went off to the academy. And the last person we have on here is Thomas Webb. Thomas is also not with us anymore. He's at Bruton Parker. He signed a weightlifting scholarship with Bruton Parker. And to round out the two that we had, the first two signees, to go on to the college level and compete. We're hoping that, you know, weightlifting is, there's more and more colleges starting picking it up. It doesn't require a lot of equipment, and it's starting to grow, and we're hoping we'll have more and more sign from our county here in the near future. Ladies, did I miss anything? Or if anybody has any questions? I know you guys had a busy night. Yes, thank you. We are, we tried. We've had a lot of people that have made donations to us to help these kids go to Nationals. We never turn a kid away. If you know somebody that maybe needs something like this, we're willing to take a chance on them, give them a shot, maybe it's something they'll enjoy. Some kids, football, basketball, baseball, may not be their niche, and we just give them another opportunity to fit in and find a little niche, and we would love to take a shot on any kid that would like to do that. Our girls program is growing considerably. This year, we had three. We're hoping to take a much larger contingency of girls next year to the national competition. And I think we've got one more picture on there. I think, yeah, our overall, our boys won the overall national championship in 16, 17, and the overall as well. And we got, we don't have all the boys in there. We had to get these guys right after football practice with the award there. So it's been a good year for us, and the kids have done well. And if you have any questions, we'd love to answer those. If you're not here, some other time, email me. I'd love to chit chat. Anybody have any questions for me? Nope? Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate that.
That's fantastic. National champion weightlifting team right here in Coffee County. That's great. Thank y'all for what you do, and congratulations. That's awesome. All right. Our next recognition is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and our proclamation for childhood cancer awareness. And I have the proclamation right here that I will read, and we have some guests with us tonight. But the proclamation of the Coffee County Board of Education reads, "Whereas public awareness and pediatric research of childhood cancer is necessary for the survival of our children, whereas the childhood cancer awareness group of Coffee County's goal is to assist children in Coffee County who've been diagnosed with cancer and bring more awareness to the public, whereas children are a most precious resource and our hope for the future, whereas childhood cancer incident rates show a steady increased average of 1% per year, almost 60% increase over 41 years, whereas continued research, new medicines and treatments are desperately needed for our children, and whereas we strive toward a future in which cancer no longer threatens the lives of our children. Now therefore, Coffee County Board of Education does hereby proclaim the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and urge all administrators and employees, personnel of Coffee County Board of Education to support our local childhood cancer awareness group in their efforts to raise funds, to assist families in need, and increase public awareness of the devastating effects of the disease has on children and their families. Proclaim this 25th day of August 2022. Together we can." All right. And we would invite our representatives from childhood cancer to come forward, and if y'all want to say a few words, anybody want to speak to the board?
Just some quick facts that may help just bring some awareness. Our group started in 2011, and since then, we've assisted right up 30 kids. We don't only assist kids in Coffee County. We assist kids in every county that touches our county. So we have Vin Hill, we have, you know, every county that touches Coffee, we're able to assist those families. So thankfully, right now, we don't have an active child in Coffee County, but we do have seven active kids right now and a possibility of two more coming on that we just found out this week. And one of those may be from Coffee County. We haven't got confirmation on that one yet. It's actually just come this week. So I don't remember a year when we'd gotten two at the time, but we literally are going to get these two within a week's time of each other. So the newest one is from Hazelhurst. But we've assisted, you know, we do, people ask all the time, where does your money go? You know, where does your money go? And it goes to a variety of things. We pay travel. We pay hotels. Sometimes we buy medicine that insurance doesn't pay for. It's a variety of things, but it's anything that we can do to assist those families to make this time better. Our children age out on their 21st birthday.
22nd.
22nd birthday.
22 more.
The last day of their 21st birthday. So we're able to assist them, you know, on up if they need that. So like I said, currently, we have seven active kids with a possibility of nine. So that's big. That's a lot. That's a lot of kids. But this group does fantastic work. I mean, it really, they go above and beyond for the kids that are, you know, in this county and the ones that surround this county. So we appreciate everything, every support. We've never been denied anything that we've asked, and we just appreciate it so much. It means a whole lot.
And we've had two really tough years with COVID that we haven't had, been able to our fundraising, so we're glad to be back.
That's what I was going to tell you. I mean, I don't, I think at this point, y'all have been around a long enough, people know what kind of work you don't have to say to somebody more around here. But the calls, I know, when you used to have the fundraiser and stuff, did pretty well, and COVID kicked in. I'm sure that's a struggle. Give people an idea of how they can donate, get money to y'all, you know, what ways can they help y'all raise finances and stuff like that?
We kind of were joking around at our first meeting and said, you know, we were kind of like a football team that was like a building year because, you know, people got used to us coming to them and saying, hey, you know, it's September. When they see me walking in the door, they're like, ugh, what do you want? You know? So the last couple of years, we haven't had to do that. So those funds have gone to other places. So it's almost like you start over. You start over with those connections, and you go back and you say, listen, we're having the auction again. Can you give me something? It may not be as big as it was, you know, three years ago when I came to you, but just give me something, you know? We also have a website that they can make direct donations to, and that's on our Facebook page, or they can contact any member. We all have that information. Some people just rather do that, you know? Of course, our T-shirt sales are starting. Every school will have the T-shirt packets. Also, every student in our county and most administrators, I've tried to put enough in everybody's basket, everybody will get one of these bracelets. So that's just something small that every student will have from us, every teacher will have from us to show our appreciation and recognition, because everybody can afford a T-shirt, so they'll be able to have a bracelet on cancer day or any other day that they want to. So we have our auction. We're going to have our live auction and our silent auction again. On the 16th, at the ballgame, we'll be doing cookies for cancer. We're partnering with Chick-fil-A, and we'll be selling their chocolate chip cookies, and all of that money, of course, goes to our kids. And then we'll have a benefit car wash over at Titleway, and then Live and Silent, and February 23rd and 24th is the Live and Silent Auction at the Bryan Street Gym.
And the mom's sale.
And we'll have a bake sale.
And a bake sale. We'll have a general store again at the auction, which is good for people to, sometimes it's hard to come in and bid, so they can run in and pick something up, they can cash out and be gone. So that's something, you know? And like I said, you know, some people, they just rather give money, and that's fine too. You can get in touch with any of us, we will come get it, I promise. We're not going to turn anybody's money down. We'll travel for tens or hundreds, either way.
And if you really want to see something amazing tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, we're going to turn the town gold. It's amazing how fast our volunteers, our kids and our kids groups from CCA and Coffee Hot, they'll be out there putting bows and the flags up, and it's like a wave going through. And then just to tout, next month with breast cancer, when we switch those out, that's another amazing sight, because you'll see the gold, and it'll turn into pink. It's really something neat. So we're going to do that tomorrow for, if anybody wants to see it, it's really safe to see.
We started, our headquarters is below Smile Dockers, and so we start there, and we go as far as our bows reach, and it's usually almost to the railroad tracks. So that's really good.
We appreciate what y'all, I mean, as a community member, I appreciate what y'all do. And like I say, I encourage anybody who's got means to donate or help, you know?
I will say that 90, 95% of our funds go, they're local and surrounding counties, and every person that works on this year after year is a volunteer. There's no paid salary. Occasionally, we have to buy some computer stuff for our auctions, but other than that, it goes to families.
We buy that in a minute, though. It's stupid. We see our hand write a lot of stuff.
It's going to the family.
It is. And they're so appreciative. And a lot of times, we try to get our families involved, but Ashton was supposed to be here tonight. You know, Ashton is a huge, you know, people associate our group with Ashton a lot because, you know, of course, he's just so precious, and he's been one that's out, invisible. And a lot of these families are private, and they don't necessarily, but once they get in and they get loved on by all of us, they do, they'll bid everything you ask them to bid. I mean, you know, they just really, they've really, they really come around, you know, in spite of their hard times, so.
All right. We have the proclamation here I want to present. All right. There you go. All right. Y'all want to do a picture out here? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, y'all. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move forward with our resource capacity and consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have the minutes from our last monthly meeting and work session, and then we have the tax digest. And I will say that as part of adopting the tax digest, we will be leaving the millage as it is. There will not be an increase, and it will stay exactly where it was at last year. So we're very thankful for our board and the work that you've done to make sure that we're all good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and the millage will remain where it's at. School nutrition, vehicle purchase. We have a vehicle to purchase for the nutrition department to be able to transport items from one campus to another and to transport people if need be, but they use their vehicle quite a bit, and it's time for a new one. Facilities application, this is for the NJROTC facility that will be constructed, and the state will reimburse us around $453,000 for construction or $447,000 construction of that facility. CTAE budget and local needs, we have the plan that's been presented from the CTAE director, and we're asking the board to approve that tonight. Anita M. Lowry, 21st Century Summit of Evaluation was reviewed with staff from the 21st Century Learning Center in our work session, and we'll ask the board to approve that document, as well as the grant acceptance letter that we would ask the board to approve, and this will bring approximately $315,000 to the Boys and Girls Club and 21st Century Club this coming year. Chromebook purchase, our technology department is asking the board to approve, and I'm recommending we approve the purchase of 400 Chromebooks to replenish our supply and replace devices that have been phased out or will be phased out, and this will be purchased. CTAE budget and local needs, we have the plan that's been presented from the CTAE director, and we're asking the board to approve that tonight. The Nita M. Lowry 21st Century Summit of Evaluation was reviewed with staff from the 21st Century Learning Center, and our work session will ask the board to approve that document, as well as the grant acceptance letter that we would ask the board to approve, and this will bring approximately $315,000 to the Boys and Girls Club and 21st Century Club this coming year. Chromebook purchase, our technology department is asking the board to approve, and I'm recommending we approve the purchase of 400 Chromebooks to replenish our supply and replace devices that have been phased out or will be phased out, and this will be purchased using American Recovery Act or SRT2 funds. And then we have the surplus property, some Chromebook carts that are no longer used, and then also some network switches that are no longer needed by the system, and they will be sold on GovDeals. And Satilla HVAC, we have the low bid from Stalvi Heating and Air, which is a local vendor, and their low bid is $1,242,074, and Stalvi will be, after the board accepts his bid, doing the replacement of HVAC at Satilla Elementary School, and that also will be paid for using American Recovery Act funds. Softball batting cage, we're going to do improvements at the softball facility, and this proposal came from Douglas Metal and Steel Manufacturers, $26,999 we're asking the board to approve tonight. Strategic planning resolution, it's time for us to develop a new five-year strategic plan, and so the board will approve the resolution tonight, directing myself and the staff of the school system to move forward with a strategic plan, and that's the consent agenda. Any questions?
Do we need the annual training plan included?
Yes, sir, yes, the annual training, thank you.
Can I ask for a motion to amend the agenda to include the Coffey County Board of Education annual training plan that we discussed at the work session, add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dowers, second. Mr. Wade, any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So the consent agenda has been approved? Y'all need to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second, any discussion? All in favor? All right.
All right. Executive session, I do have a need for executive session to discuss real estate and disciplinary action or evaluation of employees, also the superintendent's evaluation and personnel.
Right, need a motion to exit to executive session? Ms. Johnson, second. Mr. Dowers, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Exit executive session?
I thought a little.
Ms. Johnson, second, by Mr. Wade, any discussion? All in favor? All right, go back to work.
Yes, sir. I would ask the board to approve the personnel list as presented.
Motion to accept. Mr. Wade?
Second.
Ms. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor?
And at this time, we will move forward with the public comments, do we have anybody here, the public comments? And adjournment, Mr. Chairman?
No comments, excuse me, no public comments, we are adjourned.